Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Larry Woodard with Ten Mile Christian Church. Welcome Larry. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
Our dear heavenly Father, tonight I pray for this council and Mayor Tammy. Together they have guided one of the fastest growing communities in our nation with few setbacks. Every council meeting begins with a pledge of allegiance to the American flag and a prayer. These seemingly quiet moments of reflection at the beginning of each meeting have had a profound influence on this community. Blessed I am as they prepare to conduct more business tonight. We are proud of this city and the recent joint project with the YMCA and the schools and St. Luke's and city parks and others, and it reflects the ability of this city to work together with partners for the common good. Bless all the individual city leaders who had a hand in completing the hill. I pray tonight for the health of council members and the mayor. They spend long hours on city matters and over time, this takes its toll on their families and on them as individuals. Tonight I pray for the many different entities that make Meridian such a bright spot in our world. The police, the fire, the emergency personnel, the clerks, the planners, the parks and rec personnel, and the list just keeps going on and on. But dedication to their job is rewarded when they see Meridian held up as one of the nation's best cities. Much work continues to keep this city in the forefront, and one of these is the faith community of this city. As a church leader, I'm amazed each Sunday to meet new people who have just moved to Meridian from California, Washington, and more recently Wyoming. Their response is always about the same. We looked around for a good community, and once we found Meridian, now we're looking for a new church home. That seems to follow. So tonight we thank you for blessing Meridian and this council which helped make it happen. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Larry.
Thank you Larry.
And thank you for your email about the hill. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
As a side note, item 10C wasn't noticed properly, and so we anticipate that we'll be continuing that, but other than that, I move that we remove item 7J from the consent agenda and approve the agenda as published otherwise.
Second? I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes most carried. Item 10C was not properly noticed. We did not have a complete mail list, so we cannot hold the public meeting. So if anyone's here for item 10C, we apologize, but we can't hear it. But thank you for joining us if you are here. Mr. Clerk?
No signups, Madam Mayor?
Okay, so we'll move to item 6A, which is Public Works Week. And I'm going to move to the podium and ask our Public Works team to join me. Well, this is a big work for our -- big work, a big week for our Public Works Department. It's Public Works Week in the city of Meridian, and there's a lot of activities. I think after I read the proclamation, Del, if you'd like to come up and talk about what's going on this week, that would be awesome. Okay, so whereas the dependable delivery of public work services, including the supply and distribution of clean, safe water, wastewater collection and treatment, and solid waste management is cool and critical to the health, safety, and quality of life of the residents of our community; and whereas the ability to sustain the quality of services is dependent on the understanding and support of informed citizens; and whereas planning, design, construction, and operation of efficient and reliable public works facilities are dependent on the dedication and skill of awesome public works employees; and whereas the staff, leadership, and partners of the Meridian Public Works Department understand the importance of the work they perform, which allows them to walk the streets proudly as they are dedicated to serving this community. Therefore, I, Tammy DeViert, Mayor of the city of Meridian, do hereby proclaim the week of June 4th through the 8th as Meridian Public Works Week here in the city of Meridian, and call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services, and do recognize the contributions of which public works officials make every day to our health, our safety, and our comfort and quality of life. I'll present this to our Director, Del Boat House, and ask him for comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council for that acknowledgement, and I gladly accept that acknowledgement on behalf of over 100 professionals working in our community on behalf of public works and delivering what we hope to be consistent and unprecedented services for the city. This is our 10th year of the Public Works Week celebration. It's an extension of a national effort that recognizes those in the public work industry across the nation. There's some 40,000 professionals that are serving in similar capacities across the country. And this year's theme is the power of public works. So it's a busy week. Things are ramping up rapidly. We've got one of our key events occurring tomorrow, and that's the Go With the Flow Tour, and that offers those participants the opportunity to get a behind-the-scenes view of our water and wastewater utilities. We've got a full bus. We'll start here tomorrow evening. We visit and get inside the iconic Meridian Water Tower as a first stop. We get a chance to visit our newest water treatment facility, which is off Ten Mile at our well 27. Up close and personal with that effort, get a chance to go down into a state-of-the-art lift station facility off of South Black Cat. Some call it the eighth wonder of the world. I don't know who would call it that, but somebody did, so that's what's important. And then we end that tour tomorrow evening at our wastewater resource recovery facility, the waste treatment plant, where we have an unprecedented capacity expansion going on, and the participants will get a chance to see the very large and complex process and what it takes in terms of making investments for the future. So that gets us started off this week. Thursday, we have, I think, the cornerstone event, and we invite everybody to come join us, public work staff here at City Hall in the plaza for our expo. We'll have our mascots, Hydro and Tootsie, to entertain and participate, but that's from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock. It's open to the entire public. It's an awesome family event where we invite kids and families. It's a celebration of many of the things that we do in public works, along with our partners in the community that are extremely important for us. So it's food, fun, education, and it's all free. So please, please join us tomorrow, or excuse me, on Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 for that activity. And free is key to us, and it wouldn't happen that way without our significant sponsors and partners in the community, and we want to acknowledge a couple of them. This evening, we have a new category that we call Platinum, and I'm pleased to acknowledge both Coastline Equipment and Republic Services, and thank them for their Platinum-level participation with us, along with gold sponsors, JUB Engineering, Civil Survey, Brown &amp; Caldwell, Mountain Waterworks, ACS, Ferguson, and we have several others that have participated in some way in that activity. And it's just a great, a great event that we have for the week. We appreciate the support. We appreciate the acknowledgement, so thank you very much, and we hope to see the public join us for the activities on Thursday.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Anything?
Yeah, we only get to a guy's picture. Let's see if we're tied up right here.
Get over there.
Oops, I want to be clear.
Thank you, Genesis. Thank you, and I think if you haven't gone on one of the tours with Go With the Flow, it's well worth it. You'll see our employees and the pride they have in the work that they do and the quality of facilities that we have. Another one of our partners on the expo is ACHD, brings out large equipment to show the kids and the families, and there's, it's always the big equipment that's the hit, and so that, and having to pull a billing permit to build a birdhouse. Kids enjoy that too, so it's a fun day. Okay, with that said, we'll go ahead, and item seven is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item J, which has been removed.
Second? Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as changed. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All ayes most carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So item 9A is under community items presentations. We have Ada County Highway District here to present the upcoming fifth season of the year, which is road construction. Oh, no, this is on chip sealing. Thank you for joining us.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, thank you. My name's Tim Nicholson. I'm the Deputy Director of Maintenance for the Ada County Highway District, and while we're not chip sealing within the city of Meridian this year, we are still chip sealing. And as elected officials, I know that you're in close contact with the public all the time and potentially get questions about our operations, so we just want to be able to equip you with some of that knowledge. So why do we chip seal? The main reason we chip seal is because of the oxidation of the road surface leads to brittle, cracking asphalt and potential water infiltration in the roadway, which could cause long-term problems for the road and the subbase itself. The crack sealing and chip seal operation that we do every year on our roads helps prevent that by sealing those cracks and providing a new wearing surface on the top of the road for the traveling public. It also gives us a lot of bang for our buck. As you can see, we, our cost last year for chip seal was 20 cents per square foot compared to a mill and overlay project, so generic two-inch mill and two-inch overlay was about six times that cost. So we're going to spend about $7 million this year on the operation, and you can see some of the metrics that we have lined out. 447 lane miles, 6,900 tons of liquid asphalt to be used, about 40,000 tons of aggregate, all in 45 working days. And last year, if you remember, we did about 550 miles, so a little less this year. Last year was quite the effort. We didn't get finished with some of the fog sealing last year in the Eagle area. We got all the chips down, but the weather prevented us from getting all the fog sealed done. We have about 40 more miles to fog seal, which we're going to incorporate in to this year's project and get that done at the beginning of this upcoming season.
Do you call that fog seal?
Fog seal, yes. So it's, I'll talk about it here in a minute, but it's the black oil coating over top the chips. It's basically a black canvas. It helps lock in the chips, and it also gives the paint crew the ability to put down the new striping. But I'll show you that here in a second as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is a little bit about a picture that describes the chip seal, and you can see in towards the top of the picture, we have the distributor truck spraying the oil, followed closely by the chipper spreading the rocks. Of course, these rocks are hauled into the chipper via dump trucks, and what you can't see in this picture is a chain of rollers. It would be to the bottom of the picture, out of view, but we have about four rollers that are incorporated into the chip seal train. And these rollers aren't for compaction, like you have on normal asphalt. They basically just orient the chips in the oil and make it so that way we don't have chips stacked on top of other chips. They orient them down into the voids. Also, what happens before all this is our sweepers are in ahead of time, sweeping the roads, getting rid of all the debris, any leaves and sticks that might be in the roadway so it's clean for the chip seal operation. They then follow up the chip within a couple of days and then sweep up any of the excess chips that might still be on the road in preparation for the fog seal. This is a little bit of a blurry picture, but as you can see what's happening here, this is a road that's already been chip sealed in a rural part of town, obviously, spraying the fog seal. And again, it's another layer of oil that helps solidify and lock in the chips to prevent that chip loss and gives us a blank canvas for the paint striping, like I had mentioned So here's our schedule. Our official start date is coming up in a week, on June 12th. We anticipate being completed late August, weather permitting. We have a little project to do up on Blacks Creek that we call a viper seal. It's similar to a chip seal, but with larger rock and not suited for residential and/or high-traffic areas. These are usually done out on rural, very rural roads with a much, much larger aggregate. We have a little chip seal wrap-up party to thank our vendors and our crews for all the hard work that they've done, and we won't be chip sealing the week of July 2nd due to the holiday. We usually take that week off. We regroup, do maintenance on equipment, and then get back at it after the holidays, not to impact a lot of the residents that might be having block parties, fireworks, and all the traveling that's done during that time, too. Outreach efforts that we've taken on so far, we've spoken to our commission already, May 16th. We're here before you tonight and going to be before the fine folks of Garden City next week as well. We also get together with our friends at Ada County Sheriff's Office and present to their dispatchers. They get a lot of questions from the public as well, just getting called in there, so we'd like to give them an overview as to what's going on and good contact information. So this year, we're going to be in Zone 1. That's the pink area right in the center of the map, which is loosely bordered by the river on the north, Five Mile Road on the west, Victory on the south, and Orchard Street on the east. And again, like I said, this is outside of Meridian's area of impact, but very close and adjacent to that. And like I said, you have plenty of folks that you deal with on a daily basis that are commuting to and from and through this area here to the city of Meridian, so if you're posed questions, you'll have that information, be able to answer anything that you might Here's a more blown-up detailed view of the chip seal area, and I provided maps to all of you that you can reference if you need to. The green roads that you'll see here are residential roads, and on those roads, we use a smaller chip, the quarter-inch chip. The purple roads have the larger 3/8 chip. These are arterial and collector roads, so more traffic, heavier wear. The demarcation colors that you'll see, blue in the north and green in the south, represents the areas that our Adams and Cloverdale maintenance crews are splitting between them. Basically, just solely on geography and lane miles that they each have to cover, we try and split it up pretty evenly between the two. So with that, I'd stand for any questions or comments that you might have and try to answer them for you.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor. Tim, I just would like to say thank you. I appreciate you coming and presenting this to us so that we do know what's going on. And thank you for everything that you and your team do. I think you do a great job of taking care of our roads, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we do like the extra effort you take to make sure that the elected officials are informed. Greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
And frankly, kind of glad that we have a vacation this year.
Yeah, we'll be back in full force next year.
Oh, thank you.
Zone 2, as you can tell from that area, is encompassing a lot of Meridian, so especially the downtown area.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item 9B is under Republic Services to come and talk about glass recycling. Dave, it's nice having you.
Thank you. It's good to be here. My name is Dave Fisher. I'm with Republic Services, Mayor and members of council. Glass collection, there is a bit of a ground swell from the public that we're asking for this, and we've always looked for opportunities to provide glass recycling. The difficulty comes with this is that it's very heavy and it's expensive to move it very far, so you need an end market that is willing to pay for that transportation, depending on if it's close here in the valley or a long ways away. And we've, we've found a partner that wants the glass and will, so we have an opportunity to provide service that may have not been available in the past. So, all right. Glass recycling, there's a couple of different options, and they can be in combination. They're not particularly exclusive of each other, but we can have a combination. We can have curbside collection, where we will come to your home and collect once a week, or to your business and collect. And we also have a drop site option that we'll talk about tonight, and that would be anticipated to be at the Meridian Transfer Station. And our processor of this glass is called Momentum Glass, and they're in, the plant that we would be dealing with was in Utah. So, all right, and we put a fee schedule in there for the different types of services. And you can see the top line there would be residential service, one time per week with a 65-gallon cart, and we actually encourage neighbors to talk to each other. Oh, I'm sorry, it's once a month. Yep, sorry. And we actually encourage neighbors to talk to each other. We don't discourage that. We know that happens, and I think it makes some sense that they can help, you know, they can share a cart. We would assume the cart be full if we picked it up. So we also have commercial opportunities, three-yard dumpsters, and that's based for commercial, and that's based on their need, how much glass they generate, and they can also have a 65-gallon cart also if their needs are less. All right. And that would be where we come to your home or your business. The other options are the Meridian Transfer Station location. We're anticipating that we would have to buy equipment, and there's handling and moving and storage costs associated with that, and two options that we're asking council to consider would be $6 per drop-off if the customer brought glass to the site. It would be charged $6. Or if the city of Meridian is willing to support it citywide, that there would be no charge for Meridian residents to come and drop off at the transfer station, and that would be $1,734 and change per month. And like I say, there is equipment that we would have to buy. We would have to, we would amass a quantity that would be an amount that the processor would be willing to come and get. We would store it at the Meridian Transfer Station. When we had enough, we would take it to the Boise Transfer Station, transload it into their equipment, and then they would haul it to Utah at no charge. That's the part that they get. We don't get any revenue for it. They don't charge us anything for it, but they do transport it. And generally, that's a, that's a big cost, so we feel like we're fortunate to be able to team up with Momentum Recycling Glass. All right. Momentum, basically, they take the glass and crush it, and then it's processed and spun into the Pink Panther insulation that you see, all the commercials, and they have plants in Denver and Nephi, Utah, and they will transport the glass for free in 40-ton payload. So that's where we have to store it and be able to move it around, handle it until we get 40 tons, and then we would call them and they would come and get it. And there's no way to do that at the Meridian Transfer Station, so we would have to move it to the Boise Transfer Station where we can top-load it. This is a picture of a drop site, one of the glass site, drop sites in Boise. They do have staff that regularly police that. Same way in Eagle. There's a lot of work that comes with this. People get in a hurry trying to get their glass out of their car, and maybe the container's full, but they leave it anyway. So you can see there's a lot of maintenance that happens with it at the transfer station. It's not just easily policed. You have to do a lot of work there, and this is just illustrating that. And Republic Services would be responsible for the outreach and education. We would show the calendar of when the collection would be, what weeks, and for those people that were participating in it, they would get this literature. And then we would do things to promote glass recycling if you choose to support this on the curbside basis. So I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dave. I know Councilmember Mylum is on the SWAC. Did you want to say anything at this point?
Madam Mayor, well, first of all, yeah, I'm, thank you, Dave, for being here tonight and presenting. I'm really excited about this. My very first SWAC meeting that I went to, what, four and a half years ago, I said, "Why don't we recycle glass?" And so many people have come to me and asked me the same thing in the last four and a half years. So I'm just grateful and excited that we're finally going to have the opportunity to do that for our citizens.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Can we back up to the slide that, the curbside rates? Just want to stare at it for a little longer.
Yes, and if you would like me to comment on the mayor, this would, we're anticipating this as subscription, so it wouldn't, so it would be people that are interested in having the service would sign up for it, and it wouldn't, we're not talking about a citywide program.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor? Just similar to the grass cart?
Yes.
Very similar, yes.
Cool. I have no problem with that. In fact, I love the grass cart so much. And every time I tell anybody about it, because nobody knows about it, they immediately sign up for it. But, so I'm all for opt-in to your own kind of expense thing, but the latter idea of us, us paying for it and kind of forcing, okay, everyone's going to pay for this whether you participate in it or not, even though it's, you know, dropping the buck. even though it's, you know, dropping the bucket, it's still $1,700 a month is a lot of money in reality. So all for opt-in. Go for it.
So you would bill the customer directly, then?
Yes, Mayor, we would. Yep. And then say that you can see the rate structure there, but that includes our billing and collecting. And then we would remit back to the city.
Any other questions? Now, SWAC, I assume, has vetted this. Any comments from our citizen commission?
Madam Mayor, thank you for that. Steve Corey, Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Yes, Republic came forward and made this presentation to us. And we were supportive of it, but recognized that if it was done by a subscription process or some of those choices, it really wouldn't have any SWAC participation. So we're supportive and we suggested, we recommended that Dave make the presentation directly to you. And we do like the idea.
Sign me up. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, we're looking... We're not making a decision about this tonight. Is this for presentation purposes only? Are you wanting us to discuss and come to some kind of a...
As you see, it's under presentations, not under action items. If council would like to have this brought back to them. Mr. Neri, what would be the next steps?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we probably want to do a resolution so you'd have some record of approving the glass program as presented. If the desire was for the city participation part, then obviously we'd want that as well to be included. So we really want the direction on a resolution to begin the program. And if the desire is for the city to pay for that portion of the collective recycling at the transfer station, we'd like that. And then we'll bring a resolution back for a vote next week.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So for the city to pay for it, whether it's out of the enterprise fund or the general fund or if we increase the rates, we're talking about less than six cents per household. So I think that this benefit offers so much more to the community and the households than six cents a month. I'm in favor of paying for it as a whole, as opposed to charging the users $6 to drop off one load of glass.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Those six cents and 75 cents, $1.50s and 3 cents add up. I mean, I've got some citizens in the room. It's not a public hearing, but sure. I mean, I've had lots of people who've said, "Hey, anytime we can have a public hearing where I can come testify about getting rid of the recycling program altogether, I'd love to." I'm like, "Well, if we ever get to that day, I'll make sure that you know." So for sure, if we're ever going to discuss forcing, you know, an additional recycling program into people's bills, then I would pray that we'd have a public hearing on it. But again, all these little nickels and dimes add up to a lot of money. It's already really expensive to move here and live here. And what's another six cents? Well, it's another six cents on top of the thousands that they're already paying.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I'm also interested in maybe doing a public hearing about it because I'm kind of leaning toward residential picking up the tab. But I'm also a little bit concerned about how much it would cost some of our businesses that are very heavily glass oriented and would just kind of like to get some more feedback from our businesses and maybe some of our residents. But I think this is an absolute great opportunity, no matter what direction we go. And I guess my question for Dave is, when we determine that, about how long will it take before glass recycling will be up and running?
Mayor and members of council, I would anticipate that probably within 30 days to 45 days, depending on the time of year and those things, but it can happen pretty quickly.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So Dave, if council says we'd like to have the opt-in residential pickup, that could be done separate of the other that should have a public hearing so the public can weigh in. It's not either or. It can be both, but you could start one before the other.
Certainly, Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Dave, in a glass recycling program, is there a type of product that is the vast majority of the glass that's produced for the program?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and yeah, as you know, lots of products that used to be in glass are not in glass anymore. But we see a lot of wine bottles, beer bottles, those type of containers.
Madam Mayor. So it's safe to say that alcoholic beverages are the vast majority of what's producing a glass recycling program?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Madam Mayor, I mean, Meridian has a very, very dense Mormon population. I think pickles is about the only thing I can think that I've had in a glass jar at all in the last... Actually, that's all I can think of.
Salsa?
I do love pickles. They have...
I have lots of glass.
Paste is in a plastic, but...
A food glass.
Yeah, I mean, I can imagine maybe in Boise or other municipalities around here that it may be more widespread, that there's more... A higher percentage of citizens would be having more glass containers than Meridian. And so I, again, just another reason to not force it on everybody, to have it as a user fee. If you choose to participate in this because you happen to be going through a lot of glass bottles or a few glass bottles or a few glass containers. But I mean, I think the demographics of our city are such that it would be everybody paying for a few.
Can I ask, so you showed residential. Would this be available for commercial as well? And what would those charges look like?
Certainly it would. Let me go there. All right, I have the...
So those would be the larger dumpster?
Right. Yeah, and like I say, we can come once a week, twice a week, three times, once a month, two times a month. We can give you multiple carts. We really try to craft it for the size of area you have, for the container and your needs. And certainly, if there's someone that produces even more than that, we could go to a large industrial type container too. But that would be, I don't know of anybody that produces that many.
That's awesome. Baby food.
Madam Mayor?
Baby food. All in jars, I mean.
Really? And people that don't drink alcohol have a lot of baby food. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Oh, I made myself lose. Oh, so at the drop off site, it is limited to one yard per drop off. So the business can't just come and drop off unlimited amount at the drop site. It's limited to one yard.
Yes, Mayor, and members of council, yeah, and one yard, if you think about that, your 95 gallon large cart for recycling or trash is about a half a yard. So it'd be about two large dump, you know, trash containers, residential trash containers would be limited to that. Yeah, it wouldn't be... We're not anticipating supplying glass to a bar that's bringing in a semi trailer or something, you know. It is limited for the $6 people. It's really intended for residents that are maybe more infrequent and don't want a service or don't need the service for once a month. But that they still have the option. They could save it up and bring it in. And the, like I say, and they're not exclusive of each other. We could do the curbside options. And then the city could decide whether you want to fund the drop off site at the transfer station or just have a pay per person option. So you can... I would expect you would have both.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
Dave, I heard that we could probably get purple carts, am I right?
I'm not sure about that.
All right, we'll think about it.
So I'm thinking of everything in glass containers.
A glass cart.
Thinking canning, but...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt, did you have something?
You know, I think anytime there's discussion about fees or whatever, I think it's always important to get the public input, you know. So I think that's wise to get public understanding what they feel, what they want, and so on and so forth. I don't know if this is necessarily a religious issue or say it's an environmental issue. And, you know, I'm a very religious person. And I care about the environment as well. And so I hope that the discussion going forward stays on point in that regard. But I would hope that we could have like a public hearing so we could get some more information and get the public involved as well.
So counsel, I guess what I would like to get direction. It sounds like everyone's in favor of the opt-in with the pickup service. So if we can get direction on that, we can bring back a resolution. And we do know that we'll have some additional conversations coming up on recycling, the rates, and those kind of things that any further conversation can be part of that strategy and putting it out to our public for comment. Does that sound reasonable?
Perfect.
Would I have a motion about the opt-in service?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move that we proceed with the opt-in collection for glass recycling.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. In a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Well, this is a legacy opportunity for you, Dave. I know that you've announced your retirement. And I believe that you have also the next in line here with you tonight. If you wanted to introduce Don to council?
Certainly, I could do that.
Okay.
I asked him earlier if he wanted that to happen, and no.
Well, you know, it's always better not to ask, just do.
I'd asked him if he wanted to sing a song that illustrated his life.
I would love that.
He said no. I'd like to, with great honor, introduce Don Tibbetts. Don was raised here in the Boise Valley. Originally started with a company, what, eight years ago, nine years ago? And here in Idaho where he managed the Meridian Transfer Station, the Boise Transfer Station, and the Ada County landfill operations that we have. Did a great job there and was promoted to be a peer of mine in central Washington at Roosevelt Landfill. It's a very large rail-served landfill. And then on top of that, then was promoted again, I guess you could say, and had several large transfer stations. And significant kind of in today's world is that he has been managing our large material recovery facility in Seattle. And so very intimate knowledge of recycling markets and those processes that happen. So I think he's a great replacement, my number one choice, and I had no number two. So I'm very happy that he's here. So, Don?
Mayor, council, very nice to be here tonight. I'm very excited to assume the role. And I know it's... I've got quite a job in front of me. I've got some large shoes to fill, but looking forward to moving forward with it.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
And Dave, I would like to just mention on the record, we've appreciated your leadership. It's always a pleasure seeing you. We appreciate that the partnership we have with Republic and what we've been able to do by working together. You and your team are awesome, and you will be missed.
Thank you, Mayor. I've enjoyed it. And bringing, I think, an important service to our citizens in the valley that I love has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine C is under our SWAC, having a recycling update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, this is... I am Steve Corey, and I'm the Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. And I come here representing them to talk about some activity from our last meeting. I'm assuming you are aware that Boise suspended work on the Hefty Energy Bag Memorandum of Understanding in concern that as long as the city, any city, had not chosen an option from Republic's March 9th letter for what they would want for recycling, one of the options that was still on the table was option number four, that recycling be suspended. In Boise's words, "The Hefty Energy Bag Program is complementary to the existing recycling program and not a standalone program. As long as materials are being recycled, we can move forward with the MOU. If recycling stops, then the Energy Bag Program likely won't continue." So SWAC, the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, approved a statement that SWAC remains committed to the principle of providing recycling options to the citizens of Meridian based on current conditions and subject to future changes and in conditions. And we suggest that if Meridian were to approve a similar statement, I believe that the MOU would start moving forward again and we could get back on track with the Hefty Energy Program, Energy Bag Program. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Neri, do you have anything you want to add?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, on the specific subject, I think if the council's in agreement with SWAC's recommendation, I don't know that we need any more formal action. I'm not aware, Steve, that Boise was seeking a resolution from the council or something documented, but merely that they were in agreement. Is that correct?
That indeed is just my understanding. And I don't want to put words in Boise's mouth. But yes, if they were notified that that option were off the table, then they would move forward.
And to follow up, Madam Mayor, we've had a discussion internally, council, on a staff working group to work with Republic through those other options of where the recycling program could be and then to bring that then back to the council. And we're targeting the end of the month to get that in front of you. We met with Republic today at a very good meeting and feel that a lot of those options they're presenting need to be vetted out at the staff level with Public Works and my office. And so I think that's our intent, is to get something back to you on those recommendations by the end of the month. So that's the target we've set for, to get that done.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Personally, I have no desire to discontinue recycling at all. To me, that option is off the table. That's a statement they need us to make. And I can only speak for myself.
I don't have a vote, but I would agree with you. I think that we started recycling program a couple of decades ago. And the participation of our citizens has been extraordinarily high. That is something that we've been able to talk about for a number of years is the interest and the participation is admirable. And it seems to be a community priority. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I agree that I would never want to see recycling suspended. But we have had issues with where things go. And under dire circumstances, I can unfortunately see it happening and can see if it was... can see if it was suspended, that we would also need to suspend the bag program as well. So, I agree with proceeding.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Since we're all commenting, I prefer it all to be opt-in. Period.
But I think even so, Mr. Palmer, what you're saying is recycling program could continue, and under your opinion, is an opt-in. So, I don't think anyone is saying, let's do away with it. Okay? It looks like a consensus up here, that no one wants to eliminate the opportunity for recycling.
Breaking news.
There you go. Is that what we need?
Madam Mayor, yes, I believe that's all we need. We'll verify with Boise in the morning if they want a natural resolution. But to this point, I think we've had conversations through email, through Mr. Corey as the chair, and through some of our staff, that I think this is sufficient for them at this point.
Okay. Steve, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Steve.
You have had a yeoman's job over this last nine months, and we appreciate the time that you've put into your role as the chair of our SWAC Commission, and just want to publicly thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for, Republic, for being here this evening. Greatly appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, item 10, under Action Items. Item 10A is a final plat, H 2018-0049. I will turn this over to staff.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next two items on the agenda, 10A and 10B, Oaks West Subdivision Number One and Oaks West Subdivision Number Two. The applicant is in agreement with the staff report. We just received the firm confirmation of that a little bit late. So, if you'd like me to go into the items, I certainly can, or if you'd like to proceed without a detail, you can do that.
No, I think, just because I missed the cutoff, if they're in agreement with staff comments, unless counsel has any questions, we could consider taking motion on both of these items, 10A and B.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Can they be in one motion? And Madam Mayor, I move that we approve H 2018-0049 and H 2018-0050.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10A and B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 10C has been set for June 19th. Again, our apologies to the applicant and any members of the public. This had an incomplete mailing list, and so we would need to renotice for the June 19th date. So, we cannot hear item 10C. So, I will go ahead and move to...
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting.
We need a motion.
No, Madam Mayor, actually, the June 19th is also an error. So, they're going to renotice this, and I don't know if a specific date, July, was determined today. We've missed the date for the June 26th notice, so it has to be either July 3rd or July 17th. And so, it's going to be renoticed. It'll have to be renoticed in the paper by sign and by mailings. So, there'll be a new notice sent out, but it won't be on June 19th. I just wanted to make that clear on the record as well.
Wow. Okay. Alls I can say is I apologize at this point to both the public and to the applicant. So, I'm sure our staff will be working closely together.
And Madam Mayor, if I may jump in, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Neri said, when it was noticed for this particular meeting, and then it was found out about the error, it was renoticed for the June 19th meeting, so it'll appear on that agenda, simply because there was a notice that went out. But that notice was also incomplete, which is why we need to then move to the, one of the July meeting dates. So, it'll appear on the agenda like it did tonight, because a notice did go out for that meeting date. But we do have to go for one of the July meeting dates, to make sure we have a complete and correct notice.
So, was the sign updated and reposted as well?
Correct.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the sign has not been updated yet, to my knowledge, for the June 19th hearing. It still shows for tonight's date. Just to explain a little bit, this is a horrible mistake on this one. This property is right at our south boundary of the city, within our area of impact. Our GIS data did not pull outside of our area of impact, and that's why the notice was messed up, not once, but twice. Second time around, it showed on the map that everybody was selected correctly, but that data did not pull directly from the map, and that's where our problem was. And anyway, it's many, many apologies from staff. But we do have a correct list now, property owners within 1,000 feet of the property, and that will be the list that goes out when the applicant decides which date he would like to have. So...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Thank you, Sonia. Have we rectified the problem? No...
We are. We've contacted our IT department today, and we are working on a resolution so that this does not happen again. Very embarrassing.
Well...
We have actually issues with this, our GIS with our Canyon County boundary as well. So, that's, we're working through that, so it doesn't happen again in the future.
Well, thank you for the explanation. And, Mr. Clerk, maybe it might be good for the city to at least follow up with those that were given the second notice, to do a mailing and let them know that it will not be happening. And maybe by that time, we'll have the actual date that we can also include.
Certainly, absolutely, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I know, I heard Sonia say that the applicant was going to have an opportunity. I'm just saying, you're in the room. If you're not going to be in town on the 3rd, now's your time to speak up.
We may not be here on the 3rd.
Yeah, right. We're still trying to figure that out.
Have we noticed anything for the 3rd?
Madam Mayor, we have not. However, that deadline is the end of this week. So, if we will have a meeting on the 3rd, the clerk's office needs to provide notice at the end of this week for that meeting date.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item 10D is a public hearing for H 2018-0029. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning. This site consists of 1.13 acres of land. It's currently zoned R1 in Ada County, located at 1775 West Pine Avenue. The comprehensive plan Future Land Use Map designation, as shown there on the map on the left, is medium-density residential. The abutting property to the south is designated general industrial. Because the Future Land Use Map is a vision for a built-out Meridian and contains a variety of very diverse land uses, and is not necessarily parcel-specific, staff recommends the general industrial designation on the abutting property is floated to the 0.72 of an acre portion of the site, proposed to be rezoned to IL. There is an existing home and accessory structure, excuse me, I'm going the wrong way, shown there on the map. The accessory structure is used as an auto-body shop on the property, as shown there. The applicant's narrative states that he's lived in the home and operated the auto-body shop since 1999. The shop currently operates approximately three to four days a week, and all power tools are used inside the shop so as not to disturb the adjacent neighbors. Vehicles serviced by the shop are immediately moved behind the fence and are kept there until the repair work is completed and the owner picks up the vehicle. In 2000, the property was hooked up to city water and sewer service, but was never annexed. The reason the applicant is requesting annexation into the city at this time is because of violations in Ada County related to not being approved to operate the auto-body shop at his residence in the R1 zoning district. Because the current parcel configuration does not allow the home to comply with the minimum rear setback standards of the R8 district, staff did recommend the applicant submit and obtain approval of a property boundary adjustment application to enlarge the residential parcel proposed to be zoned R8 so that the setback can be accommodated, and combine the narrow parcel along the west boundary of the site with the larger parcel proposed to be zoned IL. The proposed zoning boundary is consistent with the future parcel lines. Because letters of testimony have been submitted from adjacent homeowners, and those are indicated by the red dots on the map on the right, they are in agreement with the proposed annexation and continued use of the property as is. Staff is not recommending compliance with any current development standards. However, if redevelopment occurs in the future, the development standards in effect at that time will apply, including but not limited to provision of cross-access to adjacent properties and land use buffers to residential uses in districts. The commission did recommend approval of this application. Kylie Madsen from Angston Johnson and Brian Zimmerman testified in favor. There was no one that testified in opposition or commented. Key issues of discussion by the commission, the commission just felt it was appropriate to float the general industrial designation to a portion of this property as proposed for the continued use of the site as an auto-body shop. There are no outstanding issues for counsel tonight, and no written testimony has been received on this application. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Any questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to make comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Kylie Madsen. I'm here on behalf of Brian Zimmerman.
Kylie, can you pull that closer?
I forgot to wear my heels tonight, so sorry about that.
Thank you.
We are in agreement with what staff has proposed in terms of the annexation and rezoning of my client's property, and we would just stand for any questions, if you had any for us tonight.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Great. Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay, counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on H 2018-0029.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H 2018-0029.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10D. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. See? Shouldn't you have done this years ago, Brian? Thank you for being here. Okay, item 10E is under budget amendment for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, not to exceed $18,152. Robert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. And if it's all right, I'll just talk about all these in one lump form, and can ask, we'll take any questions. But what you have before you are four, all four of these are net zero budget amendments. The last one listed, say the city, the way that that is budgeted through the process, that's why it shows, and not, it's not listed as a net zero, but it is, just from that standpoint. But these are for the programs that I've talked to you about many times, for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, the Walking Club, Do the Right, Say the City. And this is an opportunity for, these are all funds that were fundraised or received for these programs from sponsors, or even in MIAC students in some cases, for some of their travel expenses that have been put into these budget amendments. And these are all net zero to help fund these programs. Happy to answer any questions you have about any of them. Otherwise, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Are we able to just approve them all?
No, there's money probably.
How would you like us to go forward?
Yes, sir, you can do them all.
Okay.
Really, all at once? You have the total?
With the totals?
Yes.
Oh, separately.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve item 10E, net zero budget amendment for Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, not to exceed $18,152. Item 10F, net zero budget amendment for the Mayor Tammy's Walking Club, not to exceed $6,000. Item 10G, net zero budget amendment for Do the Right, not to exceed $4,000. And finally, item 10H, budget amendment for the state of the city not to exceed $11,550.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 10E, F, G, and H. Any discussion by counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried.
Thank you, Robert.
Just one note, because it was listed, we did receive the last sponsorship from Idaho Power in the mail today, so all the funds were collected, and we will be doing all the things that were listed for the MIAC.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we enter into the time of our agenda that we'll hear from Mr. Clerk for quite some time now. We will hear the reading of the first ordinance, 11A, by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1775A, an amended ordinance, file number H 2018-0004, Lost Rapids-Brighton Site, for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 35.424 acres of land from RUT to R15, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read by title. I don't see anyone wishing to hear it read in its entirety. So, counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1775A with suspension of rules.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 11B is ordinance 18-1777. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1777, an ordinance, file H 2018-0004, Lost Rapids, GFI, Meridian Investments II LLC, annexation, for annexation of parcels of land situated in the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 36.986 acres of land from RUT to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial, 30.49 acres, and R40, High Density Residential, 6.496 acres, zoning districts in Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard ordinance 11B read by title. Anyone want to hear it read in its entirety? I will just forego that question. If after the reading you would like to hear it read, just raise your hand.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I approve, I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1777 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes. 11C is ordinance 18-1779. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1779, file H 2017-0095, lender mixed use, an ordinance for annexation of a parcel of land, low... mixed use, an ordinance for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 25, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of five acres of land from RUT to CC, Community Business Zoning District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, seeing no raised hands. Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1779 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 11C. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 11D is ordinance 18-1780. Mr. Clerk, will you read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1780, file H 2017-0117, Rapid Creek Subdivision, an ordinance for annexation of a parcel of land being the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 33, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 23.02 acres of land from RUT to R8, Medium Density Residential District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read by title. I don't see any hands raised.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
We're on D, right?
Yes, we are.
I approve that we approve ordinance, I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1780 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 11D. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 11E is ordinance 18-1780. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1781, file H 2017-0129, East Ridge Subdivision, an ordinance for annexation of a parcel of land being the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 40.99 acres of land from RUT to R4, Medium Low Density Residential, 23.34 acres, and R15, Medium High Density Residential, 17.65 acres, zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, seeing no hands. Counsel? Mr. Burnt?
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1781 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 11E. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes. Item 11F is ordinance 18-1782. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1782, file H 2017-0159, Siam East, the southeast quarter of Section 9, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 18.33 acres of land from R1 and RUT to IL, Light Industrial District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Seeing no hands. Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance number 18-1782 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 11F. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes. 11G is ordinance 18-1778. Mr. Clerk, will you read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1778, an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 13-2-9C, regarding trespass in parks, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read by title. Seeing no hands?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts?
I move that we approve ordinance 18-1778 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 11G. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item 12, under future meeting topics. Counsel, any items under this? We do have several events coming up with Public Works Week, the tour tomorrow, and the expo on Thursday. Gene Kleiner Day Concert on Saturday, June 9th, 7:00 at the Band Shell. You'll hear from Councilman Burns. Idaho Patriot Thunder is on Sunday, June 9th, at 9:30 a.m., High Desert Harley, and coffee with the mayor on Tuesday, June 12th, at 8:00 at Pro Service. So if there is nothing further under this item, I would entertain a motion for item 13 to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we go into executive session, according to State Code, 742061F and J, and 74206A1A and B.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All eyes must carried.